Okay, welcome to the May 15th, 2024 meeting of the Pitt County Planning Board. Welcome to all of you that are in attendance as well as board members. Thank you for being here today. First on order today, let's have a roll call.
Fred Austin.
Present.
John Marion.
Present.
Naomi Buck.
Here.
Lisa Ellison.
Here.
Lauren Ford.
Here.
Manny Johnson Stewart.
Here.
And Steve Little.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we receive those at Thompson, Ford, and Holly Holden and Shawton, Groppen. We'll be back.
Great. Next, I'll ask Mr. Little if he'll give us a prayer and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Austin will lead that.
Let me just pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity. We have to come together as a group to do business for the county. And, Lord, we just pray that you might be in our presence, Lord, that you might bless everything that is said and done, may be pleasing in your sight, and, Lord, help us to do the things that are right and proper for citizens of Pitt County. In Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to both of you for that. Next on our agenda, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes from our April 17th meeting as received.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion, any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote, all in favor of approval of the minutes for April 17th. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. At this time, I'll open the floor for public addresses to the board, if any. Hearing none, I will close the public address session at this point. Okay, next on the agenda, a rezoning request for a sand mine at Trips Mining, and that'll be Ben Rockers.
Good evening, Chairman and Planning Board members. We do have one rezoning request this evening submitted to our office by Trips Mining LLC. The request is to rezone 41.8 acres of property owned by Pleasant Plain LLC. This is parcel number 20260, located on the northern side of State Road 1562, Alvin Road, east of its intersection with State Road 1762, Avon Road. And their request is to go from rural agricultural to rural agricultural conditional district to operate a sand mine. The location map, you see that the property is located just north of NC 33 East between the town of Brownsville and Village of Simpson. Some site pictures of the subject property. This is looking at the property from Alvin Road. This is looking west on Alvin Road. It's looking east on Alvin Road. This is an agricultural land used directly across the street from the proposed site, a couple of adjacent residences. And there is an existing sand mine directly to the east of the subject property. It is operated by the applicant this evening. It is located, like I said, directly to the east, the parcel next door. This is a view of that site from Alvin Road, and then a picture kind of interior of that site showing that sand mine that is currently in operation. The existing land use is in the area. Again, that sand mine located directly to the east is that gray colored area. Otherwise, it is majority residential or, you know, undeveloped and agricultural. The envisioned Pitt County 2045 Land Use Plan does designate this area as open space and conservation. And this designation does apply to lands deemed inappropriate for many development types due to physical or environmental barriers, including high-risk flood. It includes properties within the 100-year floodplain, significant wetland areas, parks, and lands that have been designated for conservation and open space. Our primary uses include timber and agricultural activities and recreation, and may include limited development not in conflict with existing residential uses or significant environmental resources, typically located within floodplains, conservation easements, and parks. The uses are standard, typically conservation, forestry, agriculture, outdoor recreation, and very limited new development, and utility access is limited. There is a land use policy within our land use plan. It's policy four to encourage quality development and reduce impacts on existing uses, and to consider performance-based zoning criteria for certain types of industrial activities, to consider supplemental requirements for additional types of uses such as sand mines that specifies locational requirements like separation from schools or dwellings, or specific site standards like buffers or operational setbacks. The existing zoning, as mentioned, it is currently zoned rural agricultural. The proposed zoning is to stay rural agricultural but to add it as a conditional district for the operation of a sand mine. The RA district is primarily intended to accommodate very low-density residential uses as well as associated public and institutional uses, low-intensity commercial uses, and agricultural-related industrial uses which are interspersed throughout areas that are principally characterized as rural in nature. And this district does reflect the diverse nature of land uses within predominantly rural areas and therefore permits a wide array of land uses. As mentioned, this is a proposal for conditional district for the operation of a sand mine. So the site plan we received with the application, I see the property boundary there. That's the full parcel. The area proposed for rezoning is there, kind of up near Alvin Road. Zooming in on the proposed rezoning area, you see the proposed excavation area is approximately 20 acres proposed for mining. It does provide the 100-foot setback as required in the zoning ordinance. The applicant has shown proposed screening berms around that excavation area. You see the proposed driveway and haul road. You will see that the first 200 feet of the proposed haul road is proposed for paving. This is kind of to assist with, you know, both the dust coming off of the site and just to kind of have a cleaner entrance into that site. Typically, DOT going requires 50 feet. The county zoning ordinance requires 10 feet if DOT doesn't require their standard 50 feet, but the applicant is showing 200-foot paved there. And then there are three riparian buffers identified on the site, and I'll touch back on those in just a minute. So Pitt County Planning Staff does find this request is consistent with the envisioned Pitt County 2045 Land Use Plan. The area requested for rezoning is designated as open space and conservation on the future land use map, and the use is in the area of predominantly agricultural with limited residential land uses. Land use policy LU4 in the plan recommends specific site and/or operational standards for uses such as sand mines, such as additional separation requirements or buffering from existing development. And additionally, the site is adjacent to an active existing sand mine. Planning Staff also finds this request is reasonable and in the public interest because there is very limited residential development directly adjacent to the proposed sand mine. And additionally, the proposed mine will be screened and buffered from nearby residential properties. Staff does recommend approval of the request with additional following conditions. So no zoning compliance permit shall be issued until a site plan prepared in accordance with Appendix B of the zoning ordinance is submitted to Pitt County Planning for review and approval, and screening shall be provided in accordance with the requirements of Section 10H. However, if a berm is determined to be an adequate alternative screening method as provided for Section 10H, the minimum height of the berm shall be six feet. Obtain a floodplain development permit from Pitt County Planning Department prior to development. An operating permit is required by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality's Energy, Mineral, and Land Resources Division prior to any work on site. A 100-foot, unless 50 feet from the top of each bank, riparian buffer is required on all stream features identified on the site unless proper documentation is obtained from the North Carolina Division of Water Quality or the Pitt County Planning Department showing that the feature is considered exempt from the Tar Pameco Buffer Regulations. And as mentioned, I want to go back to the site plan we received. Those three buffers, since this application and site plan was submitted, we did receive an application by the applicant requesting that staff go out and review and determine if these were actual streams or not. After site visit, staff did determine that the buffer in the middle is not going to be subject to those riparian buffer rules, so that will be removed on the revised site plan. However, the riparian buffer on either end was confirmed to be a stream, and they will have to meet those riparian buffer requirements. Going back to the additional conditions, they must provide a 15-foot electrical easement adjacent to the right-of-way for the length of the property. Obtain a commercial driveway permit from NC DOT and comply with all requirements for access to the subject property, and modify the original permits, and that's conditional use permit 1905 and special use permit Class 1 2101, and the site plans for the adjacent existing mine, that's the nickel sand pit, to reroute the mine entrance along Alvin Road to the new entrance proposed on parcel 20260 so that it is no longer accessible to truck traffic associated with the mining operation. So public comments will now be entertained by the planning board. The planning board will then make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners who are scheduled to hold a public hearing on June 17th. And Chairman, before we go to the public that's in attendance, I would like to bring attention to a petition that should be in front of you this evening. Last week, planning staff did receive a petition and had 42 signatures from 30 households from adjacent property owners that do oppose the rezoning request. The reasons given for the opposition was due to the conditions from the existing mining operation. That included road conditions, dust, truck traffic, days and hours of operation, noise, and property damage. On Saturday, May 11th, this past Saturday, planning staff did meet with the applicant. He had kind of a community meeting out there and invited the adjacent property owners to kind of address some of these issues. Six property owners did appear at that meeting to discuss the request. After discussion with the applicant and given assurances made by the applicant at that meeting, staff believes those in attendance were no longer opposed to the request. And since the initial pictures were taken of the site for our presentation and the petition was received, the applicant has paved approximately 1,000 feet of Alvin Road in front of the existing sand mine and the proposed site. And additionally, the entrance to the existing mine is proposed to be rerouted to use the new mine entrance shown on the site plan to reduce impacts on the neighbors. Also, you should have an email from DOT staff that kind of addresses the paving that the applicant kind of did on their own to kind of be proactive to address some of the concerns the neighbors had. We do have a couple pictures here showing the road with the new paving. From the previous pictures, you might have saw the road was kind of beat up, and that was one of the main concerns some of the neighbors had. But at that meeting, like I said, staff does feel that those in attendance did feel, you know, that their concerns were kind of addressed. Since the couple that started that petition, they were at that meeting, and they felt their concerns were addressed, but since the rest of the petition signers were not at that meeting, we still want to present it to y'all this evening. So now, Chairman, public comments. I'll turn that over to you.
All right. Well, it sounds like that Saturday meeting was successful. Better that they met then than meet up here.
And we often recommend, you know, we can't require that, or ordinance does not require it, but we oftentimes recommend that to applicants. So I think this was a good example of, you know, taking that time to kind of meet some of the adjacent property owners.
Great.
Ian, you said that if the road had been rerouted so it wouldn't come onto Alvin Road, Avon Road?
Yes, sir.
So where was it?
So currently, we need the map pulled up. So currently, this is the existing sand mine. If you can see my mouse there, and the highlight in yellow is the proposed sand mine. So right now, on this curve of Alvin Road, the driveway kind of goes into it and up the eastern side of that property line to access that property for the existing sand mine. There's also a residence back here that also uses that driveway. A lot of the concerns that we heard, and you'll see in that petition, were from neighbors that kind of live in that curve with the dust, with the, you know, the noise, and just the general traffic coming off of that site. So what the applicant has proposed is kind of right in the middle of the proposed site to put in a 200-foot drive or paved driveway and then kind of go along this eastern property boundary. But while this mine, and the applicant can speak more to it, but during the finality of this sand mine here, I'm not sure exactly how much longer they have to dig there, they are proposing and have agreed to use the access to the new sand mine to kind of relieve some of those concerns that those neighbors had there. So going from this entrance right here at the curve of Alvin Road to right in the middle of this proposed site to provide access for both the proposed sand mine and the existing sand mine that's currently in operation.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, at this time, we'll open the public comment session for this request. I have one person signed up. That would be Bobby Tripp, and I'm assuming he's the applicant.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Tripp, if you'll just state your name and address and...
Bobby Tripp, P.O. Box 128, Avon. Thank y'all for considering this, and we wanted to point out, he covered everything. I had my notes here pretty good, but I did want to point out a few more things. That road, to clear that road up, the reason we were moving that road, of course, is like he said, it's coming past, but when this property was beginning to be mined where we're at, existing mine at now, that was the way in and out of that property. So since then, we bought this piece of property adjacent to it, and we're owners. Even though it's in Pleasant Plain LLC, we're still the owners of Pleasant Plain LLC. And what happened was, we always knew when we'd come contracted that, took over the mining rights in that pit, that that road was a problem. It was a problem for the road and a problem for the neighbors because it was so close to their house. So in this, as we say, we're going to take all the material from the existing pit and come out of what's being proposed now is our plan to do. So we wouldn't have to go by that neighbor's house any longer or come out in that super curve down there where it's so sharp for safety reasons and the damage it does to the road coming out in that sharp curve. The area that we're working with here, of course, the neighbor to our left and neighbor to the right was at the community meeting, and both of them were not opposed to it. And one of the neighbors said it'd make a good sand mine because it's never grown good crop. So anyhow, he was saying that this property has never been a good piece of farmland, but he was, first, he was against it. But after we met and talked, and this was the adjacent neighbor to our left, he was all for it, saying we had no problem whatsoever going forward with him. The other thing was, the Rivers has done a no-rise study already and started it, not completed, but of course, as the county and the state will have to have a no-rise certificate for it. So, you know, there were some concerns in the beginning about it being a chance of causing flooding, which is quite the opposite. You know, it helps with the flooding. This approval would also would put us, like I say, moving that road and not bothering those neighbors anymore, but coming out between two of neighbors that do not have a problem with it is what they're telling us. The road, this is not the only road. I want to clear that up too. We didn't do this road, fix this road to get okay from anybody on this particular property. We've had another mine that we were proactive on fixing the road, and we want to be proactive in doing so in the future because we want happy neighbors around where our mines are because, you know, without a happy neighbor, you know how life gets. So we're going to always be proactive. Anywhere we've got them, we're going to fix those roads. The state had said for several months that they were going to fix the road because it was just an old road that was coming apart, but money didn't get funded. So out of our expense, we paid for the road to be repaired at our expense. And so, and like I say, we have done so at another mine also to make sure that the road's in good condition for the neighbors and for our trucks. So this road has been put back into a heavy-duty asphalt section where we fixed, and anything that comes up in the future, we continue to do so. We're going to put it back in heavy-duty asphalt at our expense.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Tripp. I appreciate it. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I'd just like to say to your point earlier, that I commend the applicant and the neighbors for coming together and fixing things right up front.
And, you know, we talked on site, but that would be nice if that would ever come to head where it would be in place because I think a lot of questions got answered there that they were, they were just, you know, didn't know. So when you hear, you know, when somebody says sand mine and you don't know what to expect, you know, I guess they have a thousand questions that were unanswered, so to speak.
My question is to you. I heard the word noise. I know also a matter of fact that you paved the road, but what were they saying about the reduction of noise or...
Okay, so let me explain that. So approximately a year, year and a half ago, we took this pit and bought the sand rights on it. Prior to that, it was operated by another company that was hauling sand out of it. It kind of just kind of, you know, I don't know if they just kind of slowed down over time or whatever, but they were willing to stop and the landowner come to us and said, hey, would you be interested in the mining rights here? And we said, yes, we're going to do it. So we started, when we started, they had an employee that couldn't sleep at night, and he was going in there and working at night, mining sand. So the noise that they were talking about, they just wanted to make sure that we didn't have anybody in there after I was working. And it had a, I mean, it had a concern, I'd say, because I'd be the same way when I'm sleeping. I wouldn't want to hear equipment running or... But so long and short of it is, we've not worked there at night since we've been in charge of it. So then that will not happen. So I think they had some Sundays working and some nights working and some, you know, just all kinds of odd hours for some reason.
What are the hours?
Our hours will be seven to five, Monday through Friday, and then on Saturday as needed, but not on Sunday.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Any other questions?
What is the longevity remaining on the existing site, and how long do you expect the new one to last?
These sites are, these sites can be challenging to give a timeframe because it's driven by economy. So we're going through the mine on the right side pretty good right now. And so it's going, it'll last a while longer while this one's getting permitted. And then if we continue, if we go through the mine where we're proposing now at the rate that we went through the mine that we're on now, we wouldn't have over three to four years in at max. So, and that's all, you know, subject to economy.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have questions of the planning board. I mean, I'm sorry, planning staff.
Thank y'all. Yes, sir.
The Alvin Road, the remainder of the road is still going to be experiencing hauling the heavy loads. How well-designed is the road itself, and what does the state outlook on actually, because I'm sure there's potholes beyond the section that was being repaired?
And I can only speak to, you know, what the pavement has been done recently since that's a DOT question. And it sounds like the neighbors have been dealing with that for a while. So I know when we were on site to go get site pictures, they had a sign up that kind of just said broken pavement. And Mr. Tripp probably knows more about than I do, and he said that money's been an issue with that. So I just don't know, unfortunately, what the status of that is with DOT funding and whatnot.
Can I say one thing on that?
Yes, sir.
So the area, the area that we are, the area that we have repaired has been the damage from the existing pit from day one till now. So the existing road that is out there now, that's with the traffic for all these years, it should be subject to good, to heavy-duty traffic for years to come. All the areas that were in question, or potholes or anything like that, we picked up as in the repairs that we're doing, including an intersection that is down the road from us. So as we come down and turn to come back to 33, there was some damage in that intersection, and it's in our work area to, you know, to be repaired. And so my opinion is on that, and this is an opinion, that what came apart was the weakest link. And now what's on the ground now should hold up for a good while to come because it's gone under a pretty good test over time.
Thank you.
The other question I have for staff is, does the staff feel that adequate control, sediment control on the Tar River side of things, the wetlands, in the event of flooding?
Let you understand about them.
So, yes. As you look at the site outlined up here, the river is a good separate location. It's separated a good amount by wetland areas, low-line areas, that sort of thing. And just the way they go about mining, I don't feel like any sediment will leave the mine. And actually, on the site plan, they're proposing a sediment basin on that lower side, which is designed to catch a lot of the sediment that could potentially run off in a flood event. Yeah, and you can see on the, on the site plan, you'll see the sediment pond on that rear property closer to the river. So they are taking the adequate actions to prevent that sediment running off to the river. Good question, though.
Yep, thank you.
Any others pertaining to that?
Any other questions before we entertain a motion? Anything else from you, Ben? Anything else we need to know?
That's it. And if not, we can close the public comment as well, if you don't mind, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
I will. Let's close the public comment session and then...
Thank you. So about the use of the land, I know that we've done this before. I'm sorry for asking again, if I'm asking again. The use of the land after the mine is finished, are its options limited because of the mining?
So the state, so they'll also require a state mining permit after, you know, this process is done, assuming it's approved. The state will work with them throughout the life of the mine, and at the end of it, they have to reclaim the slope of the mine. Typically, we've seen with other mines, I don't know what the future of this one may hold, but, you know, there's been opportunity for, you know, new home sites to have some waterfront property, I guess, and other things. But the state does kind of maintain and require that they do close out that mine properly, and it's just not a dug-up hole in the ground with, you know, cliffs dropping into the water. They have to reclaim them and slope the side of them as well. So, and that's a state mining requirement. And one of the conditions we proposed this evening to make sure they get that as well.
The land can still be used for intended purposes?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely, yeah.
This particular piece of land is in a restricted floodplain, though, isn't that correct?
Yeah, and they will have to get a, one of the conditions we have is that, you know, they have to get a floodplain development permit from the county planning office as well. And part of that's a no-rise certification that he said, like I said, Rivers is already working on to, and they've already kind of started that process with the state as well just to kind of get ahead of things and make sure they're on top of it.
Any other questions or comments before we entertain a vote? Anyone want to present a motion either way?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I make a recommendation that we take staff's recommendation and approve this sand mine.
Second, Don Brown.
Okay. Motion has been made to approve this request according to staff's recommendations with conditions and seconded by Don Brown. Any other discussion on this motion? Then we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approval of this motion, raise your right hand. All opposed. Motion passes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Next on our agenda, Jonas Hill, a few planning matters, if you would.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight, I come before you with the proposed stormwater ordinance repeal of the existing and adoption of a new stormwater ordinance. If you guys remember back in 2022, for those of y'all that were with us then, we brought before you the fact that the state was changing the rules or had changed the stormwater rules, and that we were working on drafting the new ordinance and getting it reviewed by the State Environmental Management Committee. Just to give you guys a little bit of history for those who might not be quite familiar with these regulations, back in 20, excuse me, 2004, I'm so used to saying 20 whatever, but back in 20, or 2004, the state mandated that we adopt a stormwater ordinance for nutrient control here in Pitt County. At that time, the rules only applied in the Tar Pameco River Basin. However, the Board of Commissioners here at Pitt County, upon staff's recommendation, voted to apply the ordinance countywide, both in the Neuse River Basin as well as the Tar Pameco River Basin. Fast forward to 2020, the state decided to change the rules again. This time, the rules triggered Pitt County to enforce these rules in the Neuse Basin, which we were already doing voluntarily. But there were some changes that associated with that. Map on your screen just to give you some orientation. The purple area to the north of the county is located in the Tar Pameco River Basin. The blue area to the south is located in the Neuse River Basin. So it's basically the county is dissected by the two basins. Also, you'll notice out near Falkland, we have what is known as a water supply watershed protected area, which you'll hear a little bit more about in some other amendments a little bit later. The revisions basically provide an identical structure to the standard... later. Um, the revisions are basically provide an identical structure to the standards in both basins, um, except for the nutrient targets. Uh, when we, uh, adopted our current stormwater rules countywide, um, we applied the nutrient limits and kept them consistent in both basins. And basically it was for nitrogen loadings. We required no more than four pounds per acre per year in both basins. Uh, the Tarpamlico Basin was a nutrient sensitive watershed for phosphorus as well. The Noose was not. So we applied phosphorus only in the Tarpamlico River Basin, not in the Noose. Um, so those are kind of some of the differences there. Um, planning staff has revised our ordinance to reflect only the rules that the state is mandating now that both basins are being tipped into the mandates that we adopt these rules. Um, with the exception of we are proposing to keep an existing rule that we have for peak flow requirements. Uh, we feel like that has provided a good service to the environment here in Pitt County as well as adjacent property owners, ensuring that these, uh, peak flow requirements are not put in additional stormwater on adjacent property owners and holding that back on site. Uh, kind of give you a little bit of history of where we've been and, and where we are going from here. Um, we began back in March of 2021, um, through January of 2022 and meeting with the stakeholders that, that primarily being the development community, uh, making sure that they understand what the state rules are and working with them to develop the rules, uh, that we intend to adopt as a result of those, uh, state laws. Um, got a lot of good participation. We, we joined forces with the city of Greenville and doing those stakeholder meetings. They had a lot of input and feel like we, uh, have a fair ordinance that everyone is familiar with. Uh, from there, we drafted the ordinance and submitted it to, uh, Division of Water Resources, uh, for their review. Once we worked out, um, some minor things, they then took, uh, the ordinance to the Environmental Management Commission for approval by that board. They've endorsed this plan and now we're here before you guys presenting, uh, the ordinance for adoption. Uh, hopefully you guys will give a favorable recommendation and it will go from here to the Board of Commissioners for their approval. And we're shooting for an effective date of July 1st, 2024. To go through a few, um, of the major changes, um, outside of more or less wordsmithing, um, the, the meat of the changes involve, the old rules did not have disturbance thresholds and this applied primarily to commercial activity. Um, the new rules does have, um, disturbance thresholds, uh, included in those and it makes sure that we're clear as to when calculations need to be submitted based on the disturbance of the, the property. Um, the old rules did not provide guidance on how to address state and federal projects. Um, it kind of left it up in the air. Does the local government have to approve state and federal projects or is that something that the state has to approve? Uh, the new rules does, uh, establish those guidelines and requires, uh, the, uh, Division of Environmental Quality to approve those plans. Um, getting back to some of the nutrient export targets, um, as you can see on your chart here that in the Noose Basin, uh, previously our ordinance only required the developer to meet the nitrogen loadings and that had, had to be under four pounds per acre per year. The Tarpamlico required four pounds per acre per year or less for nitrogen and point four pounds per acre per year for phosphorus. The new rules, uh, the Noose Basin, as per the state, uh, that target rate for nitrogen is 3.6. Um, so it did go down, um, for the Noose Basin. Tar Pam remained the same for phosphorus, however, it increased, um, for, I'm sorry, stayed the same for nitrogen and increased for the phosphorus to point eight. So slight changes there, um, as far as the nutrient loadings. They've also, uh, came out with a new calculating tool to get these, uh, thresholds for nitrogen and phosphorus loadings. Um, the old, uh, rule, uh, used a, uh, method known as the Noose Method or the Tar Pam Method for calculating. Uh, the state has developed a new tool called the SNAP tool that actually, uh, does a lot more than just calculates the nutrients. Uh, you'll see in some of the other, uh, changes. It also helps us with our annual reporting and giving us some, uh, impervious surfaces, um, the percentage of the impervious surfaces as well as, um, the slight changes in the way those, uh, thresholds are calculated. Um, as far as treatment goes, the developers, um, had to provide on-site stormwater treatment if they exceeded, uh, certain thresholds for their nitrogen and phosphorus loadings. Um, and there was no treatments based on, uh, built upon areas, basically impervious areas like rooftops, driveways, that sort of thing. The new rule requires, um, if it's, it requires developers, uh, to provide on-site treatment, uh, for all built upon areas greater than 24%. So if it exceeds the 24% of the land area is impervious, they have to provide treatment on-site. Um, there's no, uh, no buy down option or anything to get out of installing a stormwater control measure. Um, the dedicated off-site regional stormwater control measures may be used for, uh, treatments covering multiple projects. So a bunch of developers could get together and install one big stormwater control measure that will treat runoff from several different properties. And that's known as the regional treatment facility. Um, it does allow for that now. The old rule did not. Projects meeting the definition of runoff volume match, um, do not need to meet the nutrient loading export. I know we're getting way down into weeds, but basically what that means is if you're treating the peak flow rate, you don't need to treat the nutrient loading either because you're getting that reduction in the runoff, uh, collection. Um, again, the old rules had a clause in them for peak flow rate match, um, which was required for the one-year 24-hour storm. Um, the new rule did away with that. However, we feel that here in Pitt County, um, that was a good thing. It allowed us to ensure adjacent property owners that this new development, whether it was commercial or residential, would not increase the amount of stormwater going, uh, onto the adjacent properties. Without this, we have nothing, uh, in place to address that. So we feel like we would, uh, be beneficial to keep, uh, that requirement in. And the development community during the stakeholder committee, uh, meetings, uh, tended to agree, be in agreement with that requirement staying. Uh, the nutrient offsets, uh, definitely changed. Um, they used to allow, per the old rules, a buy down option. They could offset their nutrient loadings by paying into a private mitigation bank. Um, however, now with the new rules, they do not allow anything, uh, with more than a 24% built upon area to be able to buy down. They have to install those. However, if you're less than 24%, you can still, uh, buy down and not, uh, make any improvements as far as stormwater control measures. Um, the offsets are obtained in units of pounds, uh, for nitrogen and phosphorus per the old rule. The new rule is pounds per acre per year. Uh, that's just some technical, uh, differences there in the way it's, uh, calculated. Also, uh, we have the ordinance. I just went over all the major changes for that ordinance. Um, we also have a local program document that basically sets forth what we as a government are responsible for doing, uh, to adhere to the state laws. Um, the old rules required us to identify potential, uh, retrofit locations. Um, it was kind of weird and quirky in that we had to identify areas that were, would be good places for these retrofits, which means we could go in and install a stormwater wetland in this area. It would make a great place for it. However, um, it didn't require us to do any implementation of these stormwater control measures, uh, for these retrofits. Um, so they have removed that requirement now. Um, I think they have enough that the local governments identified, uh, since 2004, um, that they no longer need those inputs from us. Um, it also, the old rules have public education and illegal discharge programs were required, uh, to be implemented by the local government. However, uh, the, the, um, well, we had to have education programs. Now we have to implement the education program. So the old rules were really vague. It required us to have certain things, but it didn't really say we had to do anything with them. So now they're kind of tightening up saying you not only have to have them, but you have to implement, uh, these, these measures. Um, also the annual reports were due, um, to DWQ documenting our progress. Now the new SNAP tool, um, it has evolved a whole lot and it does a lot of that reporting for us. When we enter the development sites, it automatically, uh, calculates what we need for the, uh, annual reporting. So it helps alleviate a little bit of staff time. So just to give you some ideas of what I've been talking about as far as stormwater control measures, you'll see on these pictures here, um, a couple of examples of stormwater control measures on the left-hand side of your screen. Uh, this is located at one of our mini storages here in Pitt County. Uh, this is a dry detention pond. Uh, many times when people go to their storage unit, they will not see any water located in this stormwater control measure. Only after a heavy rainfall, stormwater will collect there and basically absorb back into the ground, um, and not run off the site. On your right-hand side, um, a little bit more intensive, uh, stormwater control measure. This is located at the Country Mart up in Stokes. Um, it's behind, uh, the Country Mart. If you go in to get a drink or gas, uh, you probably won't even know it's back there behind it, but it, it treats all the runoff from that site, um, which is a lot of impervious area, um, given the parking area, the rooftop and all that. So it collects all that stormwater. There's plants around the perimeter of the stormwater wetland. They uptake the nutrients, the nitrogen and the phosphorus that I was talking about and allow the water to be filtered out before it leaves the site. So that's in a nutshell what these stormwater control measures do. Um, so at this time, staff is recommending that we, um, repeal the current, uh, stormwater ordinance and re-adopt or adopt the new proposed stormwater ordinance, um, and associated program document with an effective date of July 1st, 2024.
All right.
Any questions? I'll be glad to try to answer them.
It's all very exciting.
[laughing]
Any, any questions or, uh, comments before we take a vote on the recommendation here? No one?
What kinds of environmental groups were involved in as stakeholders?
As stakeholders, um, we basically coordinated with the city of Greenville. They had an environmental, um, advisory committee that were involved. Um, so they had a couple of different agencies, environmental type agencies that, that were involved with our stakeholder meetings.
All right. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept or approve, uh, staff recommendation as we, um, repeal and accept the new rules for stormwater.
I second.
All right. Thank you. Uh, proper motion has been made, uh, for approval, um, of these new rules, uh, seconded by Mr. Hardy. Any other discussion? Anyone? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. I just want to make clear that you're, you guys are recommending this to the Board of Commissioners.
To the Board of Commissioners.
It will go before them on June the 3rd. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gooby?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm here to, somewhat like what Jonas described, uh, we're doing some amendments to our zoning ordinance for water supply watershed protection overlay district. Um, in, starting in the late eighties, when the state adopted the Water Supply Watershed Protection Act, uh, they started to begin establishing protections for the state's surface water, uh, drinking supplies. And throughout the nineties, local governments were required to implement these protections, uh, for any watershed, water supply watershed that they have within their jurisdictions. Um, these watersheds are classified typically as a WS1 up through a WS5, uh, and that's dependent on the amount of development that's occurring sort of within that watershed. Uh, Pitt County does have a WS4, which is considered a moderate to highly developed watershed. Um, and being a WS4, it's, it's split into two areas. There's a critical area and a protected area. And if I just point out on the, this is, this shows a map of the entire watershed that's in Pitt County. Um, the critical area is actually not in our jurisdiction. It's in Greenville's jurisdiction. It's this little red spot here. Um, and what that is, is it's essentially an area that's up to about a half a mile from an intake. Uh, so if you look at where that's at, that's right at the water treatment plant. So that's where the intake is for the water treatment plant for that basin or for that watershed. Um, so that's considered a critical area. Everything else up to 10 miles, uh, upstream from that is considered the protected area, which is primarily what we have in the county. So, um, before we had countywide zoning, we did have a standalone watershed, water supply, water supply, watershed protection ordinance. Uh, but when we adopted zoning, we adopted it as an overlay district. So these regulations are on top of what our basic base zoning regulations are. So these would, so they have to meet the, the base zoning, like zoning, uh, the lot size, lot widths, uh, those types of things, the type of use, they have to meet those requirements. And then there's another layer of watershed protection requirements on top of those. Um, recently, just as with stormwater, as Jonas explained, the state has, has, uh, updated a lot of their regulations. They were under the general statutes and also the North Carolina Administrative Codes. Uh, and North Carolina Division, Department of Environmental Quality also has a model water supply watershed ordinance and they've updated that as well to reflect, um, those updated regulations. Uh, so these amendments that we're proposing, uh, it's to bring our regulations into compliance with the state law and also to mimic what's in that model ordinance as well. So there are basically three sections. The first that I'm going to go through is, it has the most changes. Uh, and this would be to delete Section 7A and replace it with the language that we've proposed. Uh, you've got that full language in your packet. You've also got to revise one because we had some typos. And even as I was sitting in the audience here, I found a couple more typos that need to be fixed. So we'll revise it one more time. But, uh, that is the in-depth language that you'll have, that will be incorporated into the ordinance. And what this does is it removes, we, we did have two separate subsections for the critical area and the protected area. Uh, it removes those. The state actually has developed a table to split those out to show them a little more succinctly. Uh, so we've incorporated that table into the ordinance. Uh, it revises, uh, what they call a low density and high density development options. Uh, basically low density is, is just what you think. It's anything that's kind of low density, less than 24% built upon area. I kind of getting it out a little bit when we show you the table. Um, but the, the key difference is that low density development, uh, is primarily that, that drainage is handled primarily through what they call a vegetative conveyance, like a swale or a ditch. Um, and high density is primarily through stormwater control measures like, like Jonas had mentioned to you before. Okay. Uh, it adds procedures for the issuance of a watershed protection permit also. Uh, we did not, we have not required that before. Um, single-family residential won't require that permit. So if you're just building a house, you won't have to get that permit. But if you're doing something non-residential or a multifamily development, you will have to get that, that permit from our office. Uh, it, like I said, also adds the table for the maximum allowable densities and minimum lot sizes. Uh, this is the table itself. As you see, it, it outlines low density development. Uh, there are certain standards for single-family detached residential. Uh, for instance, if it's without curb and gutter, uh, they'd be limited to three dwelling units per acre or 36% built upon area, which in most of the area where this watershed is located, that's not hard to achieve. In fact, I think, um, our zoning requires less than three, three, uh, dwelling units per acre anyways for the minimum lot sizes. So we'd pretty much be kind of covering that requirement as it is. Um, I've got the WPA highlighted again because that's all that's currently in the county's jurisdiction. Um, but we are, we do have standards in there for the critical area. But we are, we do have standards in there for the critical area in the event that something changes and we do get an updated watershed or a new area that's designated as critical by the state. There are exceptions sometimes to these density calculations. If they meet all of these circumstances here, if it's been developed prior to the effective date of our local program, if the property's not been combined with additional lots after January 1st of 2021, has not been a participant in a density averaging transaction, and I'll kind of explain that a little bit here in a second, if the current use is non-residential, and if the stormwater from all the existing and new built-upon area is treated in accordance with all applicable county, state, and federal laws and regulations, and if the remaining vegetative buffers are preserved in accordance with the requirements of the ordinance. So again, if they meet all of those criteria, they don't have to, they can exceed the density limits that are shown on this table. So it's a, we have to go through and check all of that to make sure it's complying with that. It also adds procedures for the issuance of what we call a high-density watershed protection permit. And what that is, is it replaces another section in the ordinance. We had a high-density development permit. It was in a different section of the ordinance, but referred back to the overlay. So what we did is we're deleting that section, kind of moving it under the overlay district. So it's a little more where it should be in the ordinance. And also, that permit was previously reviewed by the TRC. And we're proposing to have the BOA or the Board of Adjustment take over that review because there was some language in there about them adding additional conditions, kind of having a more subjective review. And that would typically require a more quasi-judicial procedure. So the Board of Adjustment is really the better ones to handle that, that type of procedure. It also removes provisions for stormwater control structures. It had a real detailed section that explained, you know, how they should be designed, what they should have. That's all under the Administrative Code, so we don't really need that in our ordinance. They'll have to meet those requirements anyways. It also adds options for density averaging. This is new under the state. And what this does is, under specific circumstances, an applicant can take two non-contiguous parcels, and they can average the density between the two of them to meet their density requirements through the ordinance, if that makes any sense. But there is a specific set of circumstances, again, that they have to meet to qualify for that. It revises the buffering requirements to comply with the state requirements. It also revises our minor and major variance standards and adds an appeal procedure for the Board of Adjustment. The difference between a minor and a major variance depends on the, sort of the extent of the development. Again, you know, and how much is going to be changed and disturbed. A minor variance goes just to the Board of Adjustment. A major variance actually goes to the Board of Adjustment and the North Carolina Environmental Management Commission. And the EMC actually has to review it and approve it before the Board of Adjustment can issue a final decision. So it's really, the BOA has the so-called decision-making authority, but if the EMC doesn't approve it, then the Board of Adjustment can't approve it either, okay? It also adds Table 7-2, permitted and not permitted uses. So this just outlines the types of uses that are and aren't allowed in that watershed district. And again, this comes from the model ordinance itself. Since we only have the protected area, there's only three types of uses that aren't currently allowed in that or would not be allowed, and that is essentially sewage discharge, sewage waste, like surface discharge, industrial waste, and other waste. So mostly the other types of uses would be permitted in the ordinance or in that overlay. The second section is to delete Section 13B and replace with a proposed language. And that just kind of more outlines the procedures for those minor and major variances so that they're consistent with, again, with the model ordinance and the state requirements. And then to delete Section 3W, the high-density development permit application. As I said, we've just replaced that with a new section in the overlay district section. So our schedule for this is to present this to the planning board tonight for recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. They're scheduled to hold a public hearing on June 3rd as well, with a July 1st effective date. And since this is part of the zoning ordinance, we do have a consistency statement that has to be kind of approved and adopted. Staff does find that the proposed amendments to the Pitt County zoning warrants are consistent with the envisioned Pitt County 2045 Conference of Lanies Plan. We have a policy recommendation in there. It's NE4, which is under the Natural and Environment Section. And that recommends updating the county's water supply watershed regulations as required by Department of Environmental Quality. Staff also finds that the proposed amendments are reasonable and in the public interest because, again, they are intended for consistency with state laws and regulations for the protection of the water supply watershed, which provides drinking water to county residents. So with that, Mr. Chair, we do recommend approval of the request, and we do ask for a recommendation tonight with an effective date of July 1st, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Gooby. A lot of very detailed work there. Appreciate that. And then you had to go an extra step and summarize it so that we could understand it. So appreciate that as well.
Yes, sir.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we take staff recommendation and send approval.
Second the motion.
Okay. Motion has been made to, for approval of this to go to County Commissioners. That will be in June as well?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion or questions or comments? Take a vote. All in favor of the motion to approve? Raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Eric. Mr. Hill?
All right. Just a few informational items to wrap up the meeting here. Included in your agenda packet is a couple of items that went before the commissioners recently, last month. One involved in Heinz Crossroads improvements. They're looking at doing a RCI intersection versus a two-way stop intersection that's currently out there, as well as some additions and an abandonment of state-maintained roads. We did have a road up near, just to the south of Bethel, Martin Road, that was abandoned and some of the right-of-way by the state of North Carolina. So also included is your departmental monthly report for April, as well as some articles and correspondences pertaining to planning-related matters that have been in the reflector, both from the county and city of Greenville. So that's all I have, unless there are any questions from you guys.
Any other business needs to come forward? Motion to adjourn?
So.
Second. Thank you.